Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. I'd like to start this meeting with roll call to establish that we have a forum. John, Nicole, Jen, Corby, Joe, Juan Carlos. And I'm here as well.
Well.
As, as this.
Oh, you want Carlos.
Okay, Nicole had the meeting been properly noticed.
Yes.
And could you read our agreement framework for us?
In the Verona Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. And acknowledge that such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting the systems of inequity. Our mission statement reads, that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse role in society, and lead a healthy, self fulfilling life.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at tonight's agenda? Are there any changes or is there a motion to approve?
I move to delay the review of the results policy and then approve of setting policy to our next schedule.
Is there a second board and Cole's motion?
I will second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented with that modification signify with aye. Any opposed? Let me see if we have a delay. So, our two point two point three will be moved to our next agenda. So with that, we will start with our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Park, do you want to adjust your team, please? Yeah, whatever we need to make. Thank you. All right. Thanks everyone for being here. Very proud to celebrate the class of 2023, which was a phenomenal ceremony that was held here at our beautiful high school. We got to acknowledge and shake hands and thank our 440 plus graduates that came across our stage and just a great atmosphere. And also very proud that we've taken some feedback from our community and got it down to hour forty five and will still get it to get it a little bit lower. But we want to make sure that we acknowledge all of the graduates and a great platform. We've also took an opportunity to thank Ms. Pam Hammond for her years of service. Her last graduation as she's retiring here in the next few weeks, as well as began the inaugural distinguished guests. That honor this year went to Dr. Bill Casemius, who was as held almost every head in the Verona Area School District over the years. And we're proud to recognize him for his service, service education. But first and foremost, wanted to thank our graduates for a phenomenal year and thank all of the staff that helped them in many fashion to get across, not just get across the stage, but we know that they're prepared for the next level of their journey. So, congrats. All right, next we have a presentation on our coach update from our phenomenal athletic director, Mr. Bill Lozenba and Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Chad Wheezy, and I'll turn the show over to them.
Every Tuesday evening, Board, incident, this meeting has been passed around a couple of times over the last few board meetings, I had an update for all of you. You had Joel with me and I had Joel introduce himself and even a little bio on him and with us and so forth and he brought Adam as well. And then we have essentially kind of a two part update. We wanted to make sure we highlighted all things going on in athletics, the summary of all the great work that happened over this school year. And Joel is going to take care of that. We can do a little connection between our student athletes and results policies that I think the board should find interesting. And Joel is going to hand it back to me. And we've been kind of working behind the scenes on a proposal we were going to bring to the board in the meeting tonight that will have a budget impact. And we want people to board to feedback whether or not this is certain needs of our district and the board. The board had for the most part positive feedback for the proposal we got tonight because I'll actually include that in the annual budget book. We'll be presenting to the board here in six or eight weeks ahead of the meeting. If I get positive, Joel and I get some positive feedback in terms of some of the recommendations, we'll maybe tonight. So with that said, Joel, please a little longer, take a little bio and then turn me into Adam and then we'll go to page, take that.
Appreciate it. Thanks for having me. You see new faces and old faces as well too. Joel Zimba is finishing up my fourth year now at the district. I'm fortunate to now be the district athletic director. So we made huge strides compared to how it used to be. We have sitting assistant ADs at middle schools now and the middle school, it's been extremely helpful because it pushes the mission forward. And it also gets students ready to honestly enter in small ways and get a better idea of what we do today here, which has been positive. Just even have individuals that are in the building every single day that can relate to students. I mean, you know, understand the level they're being, but the needs, because the needs of the middle school is not the same as high school. So that's been incredible. Adam Steiner, he recently became my assistant AD here at the high school. To say he's been helpful is an understatement. He's, you know, been a shining star in terms of anything that I needed beyond, he's there for me. He really has been, you know, I think it was a mission of us moving into a new high school, we wanted athletics to be a huge part of the student experience. But the reality is with that comes a lot of challenges, the demands we see even with the work of Jimmy Hennessy, who does an incredible job with reservations. And that has not been able to do with the demands of a high school student every year. So, but Adam Steiner being able to take a lot of things off my plate, to be able to focus on some higher level initiatives, such as the one that we're presenting to you today, has been really, really good for us. So I guess that's a great spiel for me and you all.
Let's do it. Joel, give us a little summary and where you're at and where you're headed.
Perfect. So as I said, you know, we've had a huge transition in terms of, we've always had a very great history of people to the new high school. But I think it was a goal of the board and the community to kind of see the advancements that we've had pay off not only on the, on the, on the field and the water and all the playing services, but also in the classroom. And we'll, you'll see some of the great statistics that we've been able to, that I honestly didn't even know until we kind of dove into this a little bit. And I'm pleased to see that, you know, athletics really is impacting our students in a positive way, not only during their years within the district, but beyond that as well to graduation rates, things like that. But we just wanted to quickly just put, you know, we have twenty six programs that are still continuing to grow. We've added two teams such as baseball and additional soccer teams as well too, just giving students more opportunities. That's what we're truly here for. And then, you know, you can see what, you'll be able to see some of the pictures of all too. Obviously for a student experience championships is a great thing to have and we've been extremely fortunate, even just in my time here, getting multiple state championships, which is an honor for those students, for the coaching staff and just the school in general. You know, one thing that we implemented that we actually didn't put here is that at the same time, our students do win a state championship, we wanted to acknowledge them just on kind of a school level. So we've actually done a parade essentially through the halls and it seems like it's gotten pretty good feedback there. So that's something that we'll just continue to do. But, but you know, as you can kind of see, you'll see in the presentation, it's really making a big impact on the student experience. One addition, so WI recently probably since all the news, they've added lacrosse as a WI sport now. We've always, we've had it at a club for years. We've actually been extremely successful, both programs. For example, this year, our girls program almost made the full run to state, difficult, difficult ending at the end of the season. But they've done extremely well even just as a club. And now being able to be WI sport, you know, they'll be able to receive funding through us, they'll be able to receive kind of direct oversight through the athletic department too. I oversee all the clubs, but there's just a difference when you get that, the policies and everything that goes into play. Being a WI member and more than that, now they can compete for championships, their WI championships. So their first season will be next school year and we're excited to have that. This is just a quick look at the sports programs that we have. You can see the WI sports on the left there, my left, and then the non WI sports in the right. And then we really just say non WI sports cheer and dance are just as important as our WI sports as well too. The difference is the WI just, there's a championship for those sports and there's a, there's a season kind of rooted every day. But cheer is incredible in terms of supporting our football team. You probably seen during our football season, the travel team as well too. Our dance team has made huge strides. They actually, I think it was roughly a year and a half ago started, Pam group, they have a new coach that now she's going to be going into her, I believe, third year with us. Could be your second, sorry if I'm wrong there. But she's really made huge strides in terms of really trying to advance the dance program. And we're proud of what she's done. They're going to compete in national competitions now as well too. So, you know, as I said before, just because they're certain sports are not WI sports does not mean that we value them any less and they're just important to the student experience. So this is just an example of some of the success that we've had just this past season. And, you know, that's just a testament to our student athletes and our coaches, teachers as well too. You know, faculty being able to support, like I said, at the end of the day, these students want to compete for championships. And you can see some of the stuff that we had there. We had our boys soccer team won a state championship this past season. They won another one actually my first year when I started as a flight director, football, they made, they were big eight champions. There were eleven qualifiers for, for girls swimming. There were three qualifiers across country, just that, and that's just the fall. And then, uh, then winter sports, big eight champions for girls basketball, WI state runner up for boys hockey, WI state champions in gymnastics. WI six qualifiers for boys swimming for state, which is absolutely incredible. And that's just winter. And for spring, regional boys track and field champions for the boys, big eight conference champions for girls, WI sectional runner up for baseball, WI sectional runner up for girls soccer. So, I mean, you can see that our mission is to provide the best experience that we can and our student athletes have truly delivered. And as I said, this is just this past school year. So you can imagine, you know, we've had state champions before that. And just the fact that we're just highlighting this once, we're just shows the impact that they make. And then this is just another slide that we have sixty plus all conference student athletes in respective sports, twenty plus of those for first team all conference, ten plus all state student athletes in relays in the respective sports. Five plus of those are first team and we have two all Americans. We also, before we talk about kind of the academic success, we had one boys soccer player who was recently named to the Wisconsin Gay Ray National Player of the Year. So essentially, you know, he could move on to be national player of the year, but now he's joined, he's the third, the third gay Wisconsin Gay Ray Player of the Year that we've had in the last four years, I believe it is. We have another one in boys soccer and we also have one in boys track. So there's a banner, if you go downstairs by Fieldhouse, he's going to have a banner up that was all over our Twitter account and Connor Gate is named just for this year. So it's been a real honor just to be a part of kind of his journey. This next part is just talking about our academic success. As you can see, so this, we are fortunate here, we have such a great team at CO that was able to kind of put statistics, you know, to, to, to the eye a little bit and help us understand the true impact of what our coaches do, teachers. We talked about, you know, that relationship between, the reality is they're student athletes and a lot of times if you check our Twitter, you'll see that we capitalize the student part. And because that's the most important part, you can't perform if you're not performing in the classroom and long term athletics is great, but it doesn't last forever. But what they do beyond that, having that baseball really matters. So you can kind of see here, students not participating in athletics, you know, averages was roughly a two point nine six, student athletes average a three, three point four six per attendance. Students not participating in athletics, eighty nine point six five, and then roughly ninety four point three one student athletes. Admin referrals, you can see it was way down to point zero five as athletes versus point four, fourteen. AP force enrolling, you can see just a little bit of jump there for student athletes. This goes to testament to them challenging themselves, you know, in the classroom. And that's, that's, that's really what we want them to do. Academic awards, big eight, boys swim and dive, you can see that the highest GPA out of all of our sports at three point eight four. And we hope to highlight that in moving forward, which is awesome. And then girls basketball, highest Q and GPA in the state at a three point nine five. So we talked about, and they obviously got academic all state, every single member of the team is academic all state. And this is before we highlight kind of championships on the field and on the board and water, this shows you within the classroom, we're still being able to put championships forward there as well to a state level, which is awesome.
So thank you for that. And we will call that at the end if you guys, if you would like us to go back and answer any questions. I guess as a segue, I certainly wanted to thank Joel, probably Joel and Adam and the whole team for the work that they do. In many regards, our athletic program led by Joel, many days is likely a really good umpire. That if you go to a baseball game and you didn't notice the umpire was there, that means they're taking care of their job. And that's the case for Joel, where we hired amazing head coaches, Joel done a wonderful job with all of the logistics and technical work that has to happen behind the scenes. And many times his work is also, and Joel and our team have done an absolutely outstanding job. And I guess as a segue there, we're engaging hundreds of students year round in high school athletics. And their engagement on and on off the court and track does connect closely to our results where I, I think as a, as we continue to have a large confidence in the high school. It's on us to make sure that we're finding as many things either in the classroom or outside of the classroom. They get our ninth through twelve graders out of bed in the morning, excited to come to school. And some might pop out of bed excited for sophomore English, but I think a higher percentage of them are getting out of bed for arts and theaters and in some cases athletics. And that, that does show that this is a truly meaningful and engaging activity when Joel has done a wonderful job leading them. As a piece of that, I'm going to bring forward tonight a request from the board to make a nominal investment in the overall scheme of a sixty five or seven million dollar budget. And quite frankly, one is probably long overdue. You know, I just talked to Adam on the way in, how's the summer going? Summer hasn't really started for many of our coaches. Adam's been putting in sixty hour work weeks to make sure that the way we open first thing in the morning, as I pulled in tonight to the board meeting, looked like we had seventy or eighty kids wrapping up on the track and on the field. And those are all of our coaches that are technically paid with salaries, but making a dime per hour, not dollars per hour, but at a time it's all sudden. I mean, that's part of the quote I got to tonight and that is related to compensation. The other piece we're going to talk through tonight is work that's slightly long overdue where Joel really hasn't had any guidelines in terms of adults to athletes in terms of our ratio. And the way that we staff and support all of our athletes. So that's the other piece we're going to do tonight and certainly looking for board, board to backhand in the way. So we got an administrative rule that was attached to board docs tonight that would go into place, hopefully with some positive feedback from all of you. And what we got here will be guidelines that essentially Joel, Rochelle and myself will review on an annual basis and that if a program is growing. No longer is there kind of the behind the scenes word that Joel, I'm getting killed here, I just picked up thirty extra runners and I don't have another coach. Can I please have another coach? Well, let me talk to Chad, we really don't have any guidelines that I'm not sure he put into the budget. Let's see what we can do maybe next year. This starts to take some of that out of, out of the mix that our coaches will know that as their programs grow incrementally, that they'll get extra help to support those student athletes. And again, in my opinion, one of the best bargains in public education is picking up an additional assistant coach at a couple thousand dollars a year. It's been putting in hundreds of hours to engage our kids on all field. So this would be the ratios that would be guidelines that have those conversations on an annual basis. The other thing that would come into play here is part of this budget report, when the board body acknowledges happening, we have programs that have coaches funded by our institute. And that has been one of the district workarounds for decades now, that if a program needed another coach and we didn't have it already built into our budget or systematic way to review it, it's been a work around. Hey, can you guys fundraise, you brought sales, whatever, to pay for an additional soccer? And I'm recommending for the county to take hold of that business. I actually think our booster clubs should be fundraising for lots of nice extras to support our student athletes, not the people who work with our kids. I think that's actually the responsibility of our district. We're going to actually put a team on the field, figure out a way that Joel got a budget to refresh our uniforms, get adequate supplies, make sure we got adequate supervision at the events. Make sure we have adults that we can put in a spot that there's a safe kind of adult to student ratio relative to supporting everybody else. So that's what this is minimal, so we're annual and certainly looking for feedback moving forward and I've got kind of some costs that we've been disposing with. So it's really a different step and what I want the board to understand, one, Joel gets some ratios in place. And two, we're pulling booster funded, booster funded coaches out of the mix moving forward in the fall. And I think there's an added domino that off that falls into place here, that we have forty thousand dollar ish being raised on an annual basis by our booster clubs to pay people. Now we pay for the people and our booster club can fund athletics in other ways, or equipment, or team travel, or an extra trip a year. That will essentially be kind of a double win for our athletics that it be funded by the booster clubs. So the other piece of this is compensation that for nearly the last decade, our coaches have not moved in lockstep with CPI relative to all the work that's happened with teacher contracts and support staff contract. They've kind of just been left behind and it's not a giant expense to compensate our coaches even in line with inflation on an annual basis. But always seems to be the easiest thing to pull out of the budget and say, we're saving there. And what I'm looking for the board that we actually make a big step in our budget this year and you taxpayers of the Verona Area School District for giving us the revenue authority to do so. And give our coaches a long overdue raise to actually bring us just back to the market middle in terms of what's going on in Dade County and similar sized school districts. So this is a comparison of where we currently sit relative to similar sized school districts in Dade County. And you can see across the board, we're anywhere from seven hundred to a couple thousand dollars a high budget in terms of compensating our coaches when compared to other schools. That's going to be sitting on our hands or about a decade here, we haven't done anything with this. So I think it's long overdue. In line with this, the board should know, our salary schedule for coaches also has other segmented positions in our district. An example might be a yearbook advisor that it's written out in our handbook in the salary schedule that we're actually recommending to the board would come along on the ride with all of this. I mentioned, you know, things getting our students out of bed in the morning, but the yearbook does that for some of our kids. And we actually believe kind of decades since the yearbook advisor has seen a raise and we have a recommendation from the board in line with that as well. So we got two recommendations. One, I want to share with you relative to coaching ratios and I'll certainly take feedback and questions on that. And a second will be the, and again, our non coaching position for also getting a salary increase. Here's what it would look like and what would end up in our budget book. I get good board feedback tonight for us moving forward with that. I'm recommending to the school board that we do a twelve percent increase across the board, coaches and our co curriculars. And that would have a budget impact of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars here. And again, this hasn't been touched nearly a decade and I, I'm, I have to be this long overdue. Joel included a couple of examples of what that might look like. Quite frankly, in some cases, many of our head coaches will still be a little bit below the mark. But we believe this is a good first step to include in this year's budget book. We're also pulling back on all booster funded coaches and that will really be a net gain for Joel and his coaches as far as that additional forty six thousand dollars that could be fundraised from our booster club and all the other banks. After that, we are also recommending just a kind of a longevity bonus. We're going to build into our handbook that if a coach is with us for five years, moving forward, on their five year anniversary, they've given a five hundred dollar bonus. Stay with us and continue to do good work for our, our athletic programs and give a five hundred dollar bonus. And getting out of the, the mix of all of a sudden coming down the steps and lanes of the coaches, we're cleaning all of that out. That was a lot. You guys saw the administrative rule that we included in our board presentation. Thank you for hanging with us and questions.
I have a couple. So just on, thank you for sharing all of this information. You said there are seventy five coaches. How many students total is that of us?
That we have participated?
Yeah.
I want you to have that off the top of your head.
If not, that's fine. I would be interested to know that. And I'd be interested to know also, much like we do, and this is not necessarily what we believe for our board. But like, much like we look at our focus from a different kind of, thanks within our results policies, I would also love to understand are our sports and extra curriculars, co curriculars actually reaching students equally across the different type of groups or maybe above and beyond. You know, specifically in certain things, I just think that would be interesting to know. But my last question was, if I understand the ratios, are those just the top of the kind of like what you kind of see from your best practice and is the idea that every year we could change that and you're like, oh, it's actually seventeen to one, not twenty to one going forward?
Well, I can think of a first crack to that. It's really film. So we spent, and Rochelle just texted me, eleven hundred students participated.
Thank you.
WI, which is over half of our students touched by us. Related to your, your question on how we came up with these ratios. So, and this is really why we ended up in June, Rochelle, Joel and I and Adam spent the last four months making sure we got the numbers posted right. And we used a couple of sources. One, how many student athletes participate in events or how many coaches? How many coaches currently are supporting those student athletes? And then Joel had figured out, yeah, one of them's a booster coach. And yeah, we had this coach asking the last five years uh for an additional coach, but this justification. We put that in probably. The other thing we did is we looked at other ratios of how other um pro other schools of similar size. Um how many teams are they putting on the field? Uh and uh and uh what what are the ratios that they uh hold up? And then some some of it just came into um student athletes. Uh that uh it's conceivable you could run uh cross country and have a hundred runners with one coach that had a whistle. Instead of the meaty back here in an hour, um but that's not best practice. If we're gonna be running around town in bunches of kids. Uh that we'd like to have, uh make sure that we're also providing the savings for the family. Uh so it took us a while to get there. Once we got all the way through this, um Joel had uh essentially one-off meetings with all of us at coaches saying. Here's where we ended up and here's what we're bringing to the board. Um number one, I need those supporters. Two, can you support this if we bring it forward? And lastly, Joel had a couple of coaches. It's like, I I really wanted energy. I think this was close on numbers and we had this discussion for next year and Joel said for sure. Uh this admin rule finally gives us um something kind of concrete to hold on to at the end of these discussions, uh pretty building on.
I'm changing teams, but allow your students didn't like um a different team to participate in sports.
For sure. Or uh we may be, we may be hanging out to be a bigger JV one team. And could give uh even some of the students who already need a team, a chance to have uh having more substantial playtime at the one. So I think it's. I didn't miss anything else. Chew in on this for now, the last four months.
You know, I think I think that was good. You know, for JV two, a lot, some sports don't have cuts, for example. So then that that also gives you more mobility there, um because there's an impact, as we said, there's no cuts at the lower level. And there's certainly cuts at higher level that can be an impact there. So we don't want to lose students further. Um obviously, they understand that the bar seat is a little more competition there, but you didn't want to give them an opportunity to find out if they enjoy the sport in the first place. And then they know that they have to. There's a little bit more that they'll do before. And then also, uh your question about kind of demographics. So we, when we originally started work, obviously, there there was no framework to any of these statistics. So um when we were getting them back, it it would have been too much to present at one time. Um and it would have made it actually truly disconfusing, but from, you know, doing this for a few years now. I can say some of our sports, for example, in our our boys soccer team, for example, one of the most diverse teams that we have. Um and we, and that was the one of our sports that we had that JV two team, that we wanted to make sure that we don't want to lose those students. Um same thing for, you know, our cheer team, for example, and they're gonna be now with these ratios, being able to add. Um an additional coach, uh because the numbers, we want them to continue to grow. Um there's there's multiple examples of that are, you know, track, our girls' track and and other programs like that as well too. So really, um what this allows us to do is make sure we don't lose those students in both demographics. Um and 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 that that's kind of the beauty of work that that we're doing. So we don't have the the statistics there, but. Just, you know, an overall friend under it all, it definitely benefits those students by means.
And two quick questions. One, I'm on the market comparison. Is that against average across any time or is it? A specific school that we're comparing against or? Uh Joel will speak to that. I want to say we did a like a twenty some fairly middle then. Uh the the bigger maybe, maybe only still still an average, but not a whole.
Correct, yeah. It was it was, we wanted to compare it with schools that we, in reality, we need that. Because that that's where you really kind of see that that differentiation. If you don't want to over track me, then they have. This is extreme, but tank coaches and we're bringing in four, but our team's twice the size, if I think.
Uh and my second question is on that twelve percent increase. Is is that kind of discretionary that you can you can allocate that to some difference of goals to make? All of our coaches up in market or theoretically, you take one coach above marketed and then the other coach below. Yeah, um and this was uh another reason of this four months to get here. Uh Rochelle, Joel and I had numerous conversations about that. Uh and uh we think this is a good first step uh that uh twelve percent got us closer to that market average. Um and just like the comparisons I had before, we would see some of them are further off than others. Uh they're gonna be closer than they were, but you'll see that some of the spots have um more discrepancy than others in terms of that average. Um it's also really hard to get this exactly where um there are stories in each district around how they. And that they're kind of coaching salary schedule. And a few of them were just like, that seems like an outlier and maybe brought the average up. Um but we we did not want to go down the road uh at least this year of having to justify. You get a twenty-three percent of these, you get two. Uh and we still know, a-again, I I cannot. Emphasizing now, our our coaches are needing a few bucks. Uh to do what they're doing and it would have felt kind of like a taking pants. Uh if you decided at least this year uh to try to do a market reset um and made the decision. Please this go on, uh can everyone um follow that? That makes sense. Thank you.
I would like to first just address the name Chad, and how many you made was that Joel's word goes unsung. And I hope we say your name a lot in this space. I feel like we do, but I just want to be able to say now, looking at you, thank you for the work that you're doing. Because we do appreciate it a lot and it comes up at this table frequently enough. Yeah, yeah, so thank you. Um I had a similar question to Joe, so thanks for that question. And just providing that flexibility, because I think our salary set over coaching, all of, I mean, there's so many layers to this, I've been involved in that back end. Twenty years ago, fifteen years ago. So thank you for giving us a starting point and I'm. I feel optimistic and supportive as a board member on any other dating you feel you want to do to just navigate the. The situation that all of that is. Um I'm wondering if this budget also provides some flexibility in terms of co-curricular. And I'm highlighting Joel, we talked about the middle school level in particular. And how many opportunities seem to show up at that level that are not athletic in nature? But still broaden the experience for middle students and give, right, that hope to be connected to school. And I know for my ten minutes, I know some of that is very flexible, right? We might have a different club offering each year, sort of based on a teacher or a student interest. And does this and this administrative rule provide you the flexibility to give side ends for kind of those more one-off? If you, I mean, get what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I um our principals still have some site-based discretion to um to pay extra hours for. Um our salary and how we staff, that there is I think in-house uh um experience that might be a lot off. Um and certainly you scratch down the surface like that diving deep into that site that you know. Um that's the next level work for us potentially to pay that here. So one thing Joel and I um didn't bring up tonight, even this would be a light year discussion, uh was we're um part of the added coaches. This overall budget impact is actually for middle school athletes. Um so um the ratios will stick. Um and we play middle school athletes in a little squad, like MG in Oregon. Uh and uh we were the only district left in the squad that didn't have two seventh grade basketball coaches. Or two seventh grade volleyball coaches. Our coaches were having to actually coach two teams at once. Um and uh it it um it made for, I think, a less productive uh practice. Um games, I think, turned into a little bit of chaos for our coaches to actually have to coach two teams in a setting. Um and it I think it made those positions actually less desirable because the coach to kid ratio uh was so out of luck. So we're actually putting some money uh into the middle school athletics. Other questions or more feedback?
I'm just welcome.
Oh, just more feedback. They're creating point at this slide about was incredible. They made me think first quarter, uh obviously the eligibility, this trial, some back realistically. Do we have academic advisors, uh personally, uh you know, encourage students? Even well, I think there's also that coming from coaching.
Yeah, if you got one sitting in the room that uh our uh our coaches know our student athletes and it's. And they know what's going on with grades. Uh they know, they know what's going on in student athletes' lives. Um and they you get almost a mini academic advisor, um on every single person that signs on as a coach. Um and I think that's part of the reasons, yeah, I wouldn't have kidding about English ten getting you out of bed in the morning. Uh but um honestly, it's part of the reason I'm in this room was an experience I had with a coach in high school. Uh that made my high school experience meaningful. Um and I thank you guys, our two thousand students. Uh give me a top three of those to make a difference in your life. Um you're gonna find a bunch of coaches on Netflix and that's all there is to it.
Yeah, I think that's a great point as well. It's when we with Snyder sitting there, I mean, a lot of times we'll get emails from teachers that they're saying, you know, I think. Students are always connected to their sport and they'll reach out to the coach first and say, I feel like our student's not attending class. Or their grades might be falling down in one of our expectations for our coaches, just to make sure they hold their students to a high standard. But also they have a relationship that's different. I mean, they these students, there's students that will tell them to their face, the only reason I'm going to school today is because. I like on the practice lately, that's it. And that's just a reality. And the coaches are the ones that have that relationship to be able to take that. And give feedback in a way that doesn't discourage you from wanting to back off or it actually motivates them to to be, you know, maybe sometimes they say. Yeah, I was that student too. I don't, I only do the first course of ball too, so there's a connection that they have there. Um and as I said, I mean, I keep talking about Snyder, but he's he's an example of that and he does have so many students and our coaches beyond that. And so they really are advisors. They they do a job that I honestly don't think I can do. I tell that to their face all the time. I mean, you all, you all are.
I would just like to say, I think you do a great job, an amazing job. And truly, when we say it's unsung, I really, really want to highlight what a wonderful job you do. Because it is touching so many students. We see the results here are directly tied to our mission. Um you're helping build character. You're providing the hook for all these kids to come in, but you're also supporting families in the program. Um and so really, you do a huge amount of work that is all behind the scenes. So truly, as a parent and, you know, you've been a huge asset to um to our students and families. So thank you for that. Uh I also appreciate you, your patience in bringing this, because I know this has been on your radar since day one, that we've really got to be um. You know, compensating our our sports in a way that they serve. So I'm grateful that there, this is coming up. I'm definitely full support of this. It's been um. For something that is a hub for so many students. We have eleven hundred students. Um it's not just sports. It's a reason to have kids engaged here and that's, that's what we're trying to continue to foster. So thank you.
All right, that is it for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Joel.
Rochelle, I'm gonna stay up here, really.
Can you remind the board our area of urgency when it comes to administrative rules? This is not policy, what, so I mean, just, this is just administration being polite and sharing. Great things, not other than others.
Yeah, well, I think where it's also a little different beyond what you said is fluidity of it. Um as you'll, these uh topics, I want to make sure that we're transparent, but as we learn more and grow. You'll they, you'll probably see them far more frequently than you'll see a policy. Uh but I also want to make sure that there's nothing that's brought that both the board doesn't understand and also our community uh doesn't understand. And as, you know, procedures change, we learn more, we do better. Then we make adjustments uh as well and as long as we get feedback. So I think that's the, one of the bigger, bigger nuances between. Uh policy and the administrative rule.
Okay, our policies, our policies do reset as our outcomes and our results. I would say the administrative rules are kind of the tools that the administration uses for our outcomes and results. So when there's budgetary implications, I think it's appropriate for the board raising, um but we're not voting on that again, because these are tools. Which is where I have such, I really appreciate that we see the link um to our results so directly in this. I think that helps us understand how all of this is tied in. It's not just a, this is an ask for. For a budgetary line item, it's, this is how we're furthering our results, um which is always fantastic to see. So we really. Really appreciate that. Does that help kind of distinguish where one the tool, one the outcome?
Definitely, you're bold on the labor. No, uh similar to a few of our last uh budget updates, um we took a board vote. Because we're gonna have an immediate budget impact and more than anything was a signal to our staff that we're gonna give them credit for your service. Uh on July first, again, you get final vote uh on us approving the budget ahead of beginning. Uh so this was information sharing, expect, um to make sure that we didn't have um a vulnerability. I just slipped this into the budget role without any impact. Uh so the board will get uh final vote, vote uh for uh the budget book that we had in the fall. Uh and we'll get the second final tax by the end of the quarter.
All right, so moving on to our January month. And we're in July first.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Terry, is there anything you want to talk about?
Oh, good. It's not good. That's not good. It was, I didn't see, we're seeing, I mean, there's one there, our next issue will.
So our employee handbook starts again on July first in just a couple of weeks. Uh we are in constant conversation with the E A and V S B for some very specific employment updates that will impact that. Outside of our collaborative conversation with the E A and V S B, there are some compliance prohibitive updates that we are proposing to make changes to at this point. Uh it has more of a general uh overview of compliance more than anything else. So what you will see on the screen is we're uh breaking it into three different sections. One was really about uh updating our policy and our handbook to align with laws and more policies. That would be section two point O two, um with employment opportunities, two point O four are clearly most standards app. And two point O seven and O eight harassment and mole game. Right now, those three sections are paragraphs long of information. And our proposal is to instead narrow it down to one to two sentences. For example, under equal employment and whether we just say we are equal employment opportunity. And we refer to a lot. That allows us to say can find that if the law changes, then we do not have to update our handbook throughout the year. Same with number two in our question of bullying is specifically um administrative rules that we just recently updated. So instead of updating all of those, which is for everyone to learn. The second section is clarifying grievance proceedings. There are two areas that are out of date. One, the area in our handbook is identifying days for someone to turn in and accept the response of one of you guys. Right now, the handbook is very clear that if you greet during the school year, it's a ten school day grievance period. So you start that out on day one and you found every school day that we are in session. When you're outside of the school year, it is bad. There is no definition of what a date is. So I am proposing that we add that it's a business date. You're still in session. It doesn't count weekends, just like we would not call weekends while we are in school. And the second piece is a, is a part of the end of our handbook, appendix C D. And this piece specifically talks about impartial hearing officers, I H Os. And right now, it currently lists three I H Os that retired in this past that we would run. And so for us, instead of continuing to update that list when someone retires down the road. We have clarified it to say that the I H O is one that is approved by the W P R C, which is where those folks were listed for award. It allows us to just maintain that our handbook is up to date. And in all honesty, when we get to a grievance, we are working with the G B and potentially their attorney. For identifying who we both agree upon for that I H O. So really just provides guidance of that list of I H Os that we will work on together to identify. It does not benefit the district. It does not benefit the grievance any differently by removing those names and maybe. And then finally tying it back a little bit to the presentation we just saw on fourth quarter assignments and statements. Right now, for example, a football coach, there is one, a football coach would receive pay as a football coach from September. Through August. It is spread over all of their paychecks. When really a majority of their season is August through November. That works sometimes for a season that starts at the beginning of the year. Let's talk about a track. A track coach still gets payment from September one through August thirty. And there might be a period in time in which a track, track coach says they want to be a coach in August. Uh by February, they say. Uh, by February, they say, yes, life experiences have changed by then to that track coach. And now we have overpaid them, being a track coach, and they haven't even started their role yet. It becomes really messy for HR to say, you have been overpaying three thousand dollars and we need to recompensate them. So for us, instead, we are proposing that we pay our coaches during each coaching season. Rather than spreading it over all of their paychecks, so we do not get into the point where we've got a spring coach that has been overpaid.
And that is unfortunate. Ever and ever that this is like been shared also with these coaches and there seems to be like grades.
That's gonna be great. Oddly enough, the payment has changed every couple of years for the last few years. So it was during the season, then there, for a short period of time, it was, they had a choice if they wanted it during the season over all twelve checks or. Months, then two years ago, they decided it was just gonna be easier for HR to spread it over all the checks. Which it has been inconsistent for a very long period of time. If you are good moving forward with this, then you'll um know that our coaches, but it will be a differently. Honestly, they don't really recognize or notice the payments. They're usually reaching out to us at the end of the year saying, when am I gonna get paid? So um, it's really not gonna, it's not gonna.
Didn't think so, but wanted to make sure that was like that, there's.
With that, those are the three day uh changes that we're proposing at this point. As a reminder, very similar to administrative rules, uh, Dr. Barry controls. The handbook changes and this is a sharing with you. We will again come forth quietly in August to September, but those one.
Did you work through these changes with the E A and V S B or not, just because? They were uh excited about uh our portion.
Sounds good, thank you.
Alright, next we have uh Dr. Dixon and Dr. Hawkins, who will be covering administrative rule five oh seven. Two procedure for non-strict national, Asian, transgender, non-binary and gender trans students.
What I've done is been some, based, based on um. The changes that I made was make sure our information is more inclusive. So um, our previous policy, that I'm trying to do an update in many years. Um, I'd also, we also included the uh technical framework that we made about. Our frameworks, these all from each language or law students I heard and have, you know. And then, and updated the process for access to the restroom we lock. Uh, based on advice from our administrative, our technical personnel, we can be sure that we were in compliance within some federal framework. And then we add in a section of realtors and overnatures. Um, some of the amazing grammar changes or things about the district, meaning to be a S D. So we made sure that we wrote more areas for this, where it could be, instead of the management. We took out the definitely, you know, then they're not conforming and we go with gender expansive. We added the federal Title Nine law with sex discrimination in schools. It was being interpreted by courts in U S Department of Education Department to prevent discrimination against transgender and younger um students. Uh, today we remove one more section on the restroom and locker room accessibility. There was a physical education teacher office in the locker room, a place for doing pain.
Now, given um, given the work that we continue to use the words and support all students. Um, we made these changes realizing that this under the line population of students and money for. That we're doing um all of the weekend, we can mention that we have to, that would be um aligned tight enough. Um, I will say that as we know more with anyone, um, as language changes, uh, things change. This may be one, sometimes, again, I'm not saying to be sensitive to the new our students, to be sensitive to the new our community. And there will be further updates, I think, but uh, I wanna always make sure that we're following.
So is it accurate to say, just looking through the, the changes that have been made, um, but these are really just in keeping with like legal developments that have happened in, in our jurisdictions? Any questions?
I have one question. Um, first, thank you for explaining the change of gender expansive versus gender non-binary. I was like, I guess that deleted, but that makes a lot more sense that. Saying there's something to it more to work. Um, so that's, that was really interesting though. Thank you for sharing that. Um, I had a question on the restroom and locker room accessibility. In point three, where it says any student has a major desire, but it be present, regardless of the underlying reason. So, just, is this still in this policy of those who identify as transgender, non-binary? Um, just thinking about like, if there's any student who feels uncomfortable changing. When they're around a larger public or do they have access also to like, actually, I'm just more private. I would like to have a little more privacy for, for things like that, yes. And so number five, V A S could evaluate our request that we're going to maintain the area access or a living class base. So, thank you for saying that, because I think this is also a great example of how, when we look at. More marginalized communities and building more of these structures around them. It, it also infiltrates positively into other, not at those communities outside of that, right? Like as a girl who was changing in dance class in high school, I tried to find a good office for her to change in, right? And so that could be making a more comfortable environment for me, although I didn't identify as transgender or non-binary, so maybe we learn.
Uh, I, just a comment, I was happy to hear you say, Dr. Hawkins, that this is essentially like a living back. That, that as, as we learn more and understand more and as the terminology grows, um. That the policy, the administrative rule can kind of change to all of it. And I think one thing that's really key with that is, um. One thing I struggle with with a rule like this is, it's hard. The most important perspective on anything that's in this rule is gonna come from the children who are living that experience. And it's not for me to look at it and say, yes, this is the right way we approach the school. I know this is the wrong way we approach the school. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, as this rule kind of grows going forward. That that feedback is centered in how this is going forward. But I mean, in, in general, I'm extremely supportive of all the changes that could be made.
Thanks, Joe, I agree with that. And also, um, again, let me have a bit of what we talked about earlier. The importance of being able to put this in the broader board space, even though this isn't board policy. This isn't the board dictating, because it's the scope of administration. And how administration uses insights, feedback, you know, all, all of your tools to come to. Living reading documents like this and we get to have this open dialogue here. Um, I appreciate that we're being open and transparent about these pieces that sort of live in administration, but obviously impact all of our work in our district.
So I wanna be clear about the last, those five, those last, clear her about those last two, two statements. Um, while this is an administrative rule. There was intentionality of alignment to Operation Expectations Ten, which is policy. As well as the entire equity framework is for policy. And you can't have one without the other. And so we can't live up to the standard of the equity framework. And as until we continue to work through administrative rules that, that support and you can get this information, right? So I appreciate, uh. All of us kind of living in this unique world of policy and administrative rule. But also I don't want it to become so separate that you don't, we don't see the clear alignment between one and the other. As a, as a policy that our board has created and essence of our, our community. Needs to be supported by stronger administrative rules and informed by, um, by, by informed by our continued uh community. Uh, our, our students, as Joe, Joe mentioned, and that's how the equity framework is built by the multiple voices across. Our services allow, how do we continue to support our, 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 each of the administrative rules? That allow it to come to life or else we, we don't wanna be in a space where it becomes a state, a statement that is read but not. So I, I don't wanna, I still wanna get you far away from those two quotes.
I think that's where, maybe my perspective is, you know, again, that it's a tool in furtherance of our. This is how you achieve the results and the outcomes that we have put in place. And without these levers that you have to work with, we've inhibited your ability to achieve the results that we have set. Um, but they are directly linked. I think that they are, anything that's within an administrative rule is in furtherance of. An outcome or a result of the board to set and equity framework is the overarching.
And then finally, I think basically they've done a, a great job of, of bringing this before the board. I also, it is just important to publicly state that while it is. Grounded in some of the federal guidelines and, and quote unquote rules, including Title Nine. And then, and things of that, and so, so still lingering court cases, especially. Uh, on um, access to different spaces, including bathrooms and locker rooms. That's great, but more importantly, it's grounded in a belief. Yeah, and I think it's important for us, our issue to take a stance in this publicly state. That we believe in inclusivity and providing, providing the safe spaces that this name is. So there's no doubt that it's, it's because of policy or because of laws or it's because of, I mean, those are two. Those are two distinctly different things and I wanna just publicly say where, where I believe that this will continue to try to get better.
So you have a question?
So I was gonna say a lot of that differently, but sorry, but you have it. But this is very important, um, so I just wanna say it. Um, I very much see this presentation of, of the administrative board in mind with only three point three. Around including people's voices in the policies that affect them. And I also see it in only uh ten as well. Uh, and as far as uh, you know, you only tend to find that, I really wanted to notice. I'm really interested in how they see the connections between administrative rule and uh operational expectations and policy level. But also how this rule then plays out for our social, emotional wellbeing plan. In the sort of practices that we continue to try to implement. Uh, I just circled two spots here where I see like, I wonder about how our sword applies here instead of, um, I grabbed the word circle. In, in some of our language there. Um, so I'll be real interested to see going forward. How does this come into practice in a way that's impactful for our students? That addresses some of the statistics that we saw in our climate survey, for example, that indicated that uh gender identity. Um, and sexual identity is one of the most uh bullied things. That students identified experiencing at the middle of high school level in particular. Um, and then, so I see this relationship between policy and the administrative rule and the social uh wellbeing plan. Um, and then the statistics reflected that you have the board level, I wanna see how that all works together. Um, to, to really have an impact on our lives for students. So, I think somewhere everybody else is saying that.
Okay. So the next thing we would be moving on to has been um held over to our next meeting. Is there anything else from the superintendent's report that you wanna wrap up with? Um, so with that, we can move just to board actions. The only item that we have in the board action, which is the general board updates. Are there any general board updates?
Very just a great thing, you're celebrating back to graduation. Uh, I know those were separate to attend and just, it was. This, a wonderful coach should be a part of that day, um, and just doing a celebration of our scholars and all our working staff, teachers.
Um, to see, I, you know, I know this is a thing, but to see all the different parts of the course and. So, it's like, all that stuff, students like expressing themselves on a different topic. I don't know, I kept looking at those guy on the side of the night and then, what was that? Was that, it was just so cool, all, all different things that students are in the year.
And so, just a push out to everyone who works on that crystal facility team. Um, I'm bringing my five-year-old basketball team here this week. I started never looking for a year, or I'm for many reasons, not just that basketball team. So to, to the point earlier in the presentation, it is amazing to see how things are still, still very lively in the community. Throughout the summer and I know so much schools are going on, so just to be sure. That everybody was working during a time where we'd be traditionally, I think, all educators are all enjoying time by the pool. Um, some of them are, are doing that, but a lot of them are still.
And any other updates? Um, with that, we can move on to public comments. Um, we have a couple of public comments tonight. Um, just as general rules, we keep public comment to three minutes and we um just asked that you refrain from naming any students or staff specifically by name. Um, if we, your name is called, just kind of come on up or you can speak from there, whichever you're most comfortable with. But the first person we had is Ry Kimmich. You can come right up here. It's up to you, yes. Whatever makes you most. Comfortable, right? I'm happy to hear from you.
I am doing it because we, I'm very excited that we're sort of coming around about the, um. The policy updates for more gender equity, um. However, some of the feedback that uh I might need to give is. I don't know if any of you know that we've been meeting in the Gender Equity Council since last October. Here in this room, um, so uh parents and staff members at them, um. And school students, we have a, a broader and deeper school community to give feedback on. Um, we just urge a more welcoming place for our students who learn gender respectfully first. Um, we feel like we've been cutting more, quite a bit. Uh, we were supposed to be working more specifically on harassment policy and how to make that more across the board or. Uh, so when we saw the agenda for today, we were a little bit taken aback because it was something we decided that we've been working on. So it was sort of like, what are we doing here? Why have we been doing here my way to the top for hours on end and it hasn't been. And I mean, for that's a lot to do with the fact that the board and have been, are the curators and responsibilities. However, it is a little bit disappointing, but we think we're almost a year at this point and have made their concrete improvements. Um, so my ask is, uh, we sort of summarize what the key things that have been around over and over. I mean, I realize the students, make sure the name is Mariah, they are. I'm, I'm rather the students, I'm sure the name is Mariah, they are graduating or they just, which is not very appreciable. They have so many wonderful ideas for how to make the schools better for the like about. And again, I feel a little concerned about that, and didn't get to see that actually come to fruition. So there are a lot of very basic things that I think come from Manhattan specifically. But I would really love it if our next meeting, which I think is, I want to say, here in this building, somebody from the board could be there. Something that you know happened would be there. It seems like that's probably the only way things will actually start happening, is if we have time from each other. For the people to actually really talk about that. So I really appreciate that we have some action today. That's huge, okay? City Hall has a pride thought out, I'm like, we're doing things, grown as man. But I also, you know, we can be, I want. For the students to have worked really hard to make that happen.
Thanks, right. So next Wednesday in this room, what time? I think three o'clock. We'll let you know. It's, it's not confirmed yet, but yeah. Um we're still working on that. It was maybe gonna be tomorrow. It's kind of a evolving situation. We weren't even sure. But we didn't get anything done, so. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Um the next person that we have is Makia Price. Okay.
Just going back to our quality design work. For a bias of their identity, things very bad that not easy, and even. The media and the educator and the mom. The response to me is like, when we use wrong systems, I'll be, I'll be looking. Um following the framework. Maybe I'm not a great parent. I mean, like, not coming along. I'm not like always friendly, got caught up in the home, all in the house, right? But security of all is good. That's the first. Luckily, I'm a little, but strength to know is strength to respect, like they always respect, even when I'm not. Um respectful as a parent, as respectful mom, respectful, but not as nice. Um they always fashionable, always nice, even the least money. So. But I do know. Uh sixteen years of being a young, you take it as, uh the article was told you. Uh when I started on, growing, you know, like a young child, like that. Ten years, that's a very possible, over possible. And I would respond, um if somebody that we care about, um we thank them. We want to, we want that kid to be the best, you know, from that one more year of mission. Sometimes it takes a two personal, and I was surprised in that moment, uh looks different than um. Our answer. But this situation, like this, like moving personal, being that in the bottom of my life, not even like doing situations that this kid. A fortunate mother today, maybe the year that his mother died, we really do our best. To solve this team or our own type of economy, right? Instead of a rebellion. That we know even in the, in the system teaching or right now that police is killing not humans, but not, but nothing. The only thing that I'm like, this is how we respond to authorities, this is how we respond to one more thing. That we got down to. So maybe, to be so ahead. You could be anywhere in the office, anywhere downtown. And he might end up at speed by him, but he was right though, that he, that he cared that much about him. Um I, I personally, we're in a situation where I like that. So much me, the door of the classroom is going on. I'm not, we didn't even charge. Never even got charged. So I'm just looking at these here, this like, when we talk about this right way, when we talk about these people. Are we really being equal? As for white people. You know. I, of, of wrong people. I have a respect, which has been they are, you know, so much training, so many opportunities only comes from life, like we're less. That we're gonna take this man to live right away like that. Speaking of my kids, it's been seven days of that life. My kid, personally, of all the, our kids go to the place, I bet you don't know this, but this is how I do. Middle school and elementary shares the last day. I don't buy my kids to come, because they're like. Middle school, that my kid was talking, when one of his guys moved my house and had it. Ran it on from the middle school to the elementary, maybe to my kid. The next day, um teacher told, uh formerly invested, they talked to everything, my kid would show up at his school. Um it's sort of like, what, what happened with you? Or why, or why, or I even having a conversation with my son, that's the day I changed the movie, but. First, whether I put my kids, right? But I'm holding my kid down. That this is not okay in a different world, yet also having a relationship and trust is like, hey, I changed it all, these are characters. And still. That's what matters, but um. That's not how this situation um. You're a show heart, you're like one key person. It's always key as well, you in this building.
Thank you, Mr. Stacey. Appreciate you speaking tonight.
Thank you.
Um if we've had any other written comments, um about a, a several of the trigger board, um are able to read those. And thank you again for public comment tonight. The next agenda item is superintendent consent agenda. So everyone had a chance to review items under the consent agenda. Any questions? Hearing none. Consent agenda is approved, is presented. Uh next, we have the board consent agenda. Any questions on the board's consent agenda?
Juan Carlos, are you muted?
Hearing no questions, uh board consent agenda is approved, is presented. Uh future agenda items, if everyone take, can take a look at the upcoming um meeting list. And with that, um if there's a motion to adjourn a closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub ones of E to deliberate. Or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding compensation and under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub ones of that. Consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data specific persons. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which. If discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data. Or involved in such problems during the investigation regarding personnel matters. Is there a motion to adjourn a closed session? There is a motion from Nicole. Is there a second? Second from Joe. Um all in favor of adjourned in closed session, signify with I actually. I, I'm, I as well. We are officially in closed session. We'll take a couple of minutes to clear up the room. And Juan Carlos, you'll switch to the next zoom one.